Does anyone have citizen statements and petitions that they'd like to make? Okay, going to correspondence to the board. First is the Mendon Lion Club Annual Toll Road. It says, "Honorable Select Board Members, the Mendon Lions Club once again is asking permission from the Select Board for the following Lions Club fundraising event, Annual Toll Road for Sight. This event has been held over the past several years and has been the most successful in our community fundraising efforts. Day and time to be considered and approved by the Select Board is Saturday, May 13th, 2023, with a rain date of Saturday, May 20th. Toll Road is located at the intersection of Route 16 and North Ave and Main Street, which is at the four corners up here, from 9:00 a.m. to noon." So it's for three hours. As in the past, we'll go over details on public safety with Police Chief David Kersey. We'll provide the insurance certificate, as in the past, to the board. Your consideration is again appreciated by the Mendon Lions Club. Thanks respectfully, Mark Pacino, Club President. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the request made by the Lions Club to hold their annual Toll Road on Saturday, May 13th, 2023, rain date, May 20th, 2023, at the intersection of Route 16 and/or North Ave slash Main Street from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have one other piece of correspondence that was received today from the principal assessor. I'm just going to read this. It says, "Important notice under Ask the Assessors," and it says, "For Massachusetts General Law, each municipality in the Commonwealth is mandated to perform periodic reevaluation programs to ensure fair and equitable taxation. Every 10 to 15 years, a cyclical inspection must be performed involving a full recollection of property data. This translates to visiting every single residential and commercial property, measuring and collection of interior data. Commencing on Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, the Town Amendment Assessor's Office will be conducting the first phase of the cyclical inspection process. Our representative, Bill Beauregard, will have the appropriate identification and will request entrance to the home only if an adult is present. If no one's available, a notice will be left advising you to call the Assessor's Office to schedule a callback appointment. If entrance is denied, the assessors by law are required to assess the property as they deem necessary. Our rep, Bill Beauregard, will be driving a 2012 Black Chrysler Plate 1 CLC 68 and will display Assessor's signs on both sides of his vehicle. He'll identify himself with a letter from our office along with an identification card. Via the media and our website, mendonma.gov, we will attempt to publicly announce where we anticipate our rep to be as his visits progress. We expect his visits to occur weekdays between 9:45 in the morning and 3:45 in the afternoon, with each visit lasting approximately 15 minutes. In the first phase, we expect those visits to occur in the following locations: Ashkins Drive, Bates Street, Bellingham Street, Cape Road, Carby Drive, Cemetery Street, Colonial Drive, Edward Road, Joseph Road, Lunville Road, Mary Drive, Millbrook Drive, Parker Road, Pine Needle Drive, Providence Street, Pudding Stone Lane, Quissette Road, Rest Haven Road, Robinson Road, Swandale Drive, Talbot Farm Drive, Teresa Drive, and Thayer Road. The assessors understand and apologize for any inconvenience this may cause and greatly appreciate your patience and cooperation. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact Gene in the Assessor's Office at 508-473-2738 or email at assessor@mendonma.gov." That's it for correspondence to the board.
Chief Azin.
Sorry?
Chief Azin.
Yes.
Can I just get that forward to the police officer?
Yeah. Yes. I will do that immediately. Okay. Town Hall Construction Update. I just wanted to update the board that the contractor told me that he expected that the work of the current construction project downstairs will be complete the first week in June of 2023. Number six, Town-Owned Land Abatement of Taxes. Is the Finance Director on? And Kim, do you want to talk about this? Or you want me just to read the documentation she provided? Okay. Okay, here's the documentation that our Treasurer Collector, Finance Director, provided. She asked for an agenda item to address the abatement of unpaid taxes for six and eight Trask Road. And the discussion points out the property located at six, eight, and nine Trask Road were gifted to the Town Amendment and a deed was recorded on October 21st, 2020 with the Worcester Registry of Deeds. Unfortunately, the Assessor's Office nor the Treasurer Collector's Office was notified of the gifted property at the time of the acceptance of the gift. FY 2021 tax assessments were already in the books and properties had tax liabilities. Real estate taxes were not abated as they should have been and therefore remain uncollect[385.77][386.77]($5,800) as of the date of the gift. Treasurer Collector's Office is reconciling outstanding receivables and requesting that this situation be rectified. According to Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 72A, we need to receive authorization from the controlling authority, our Select Board, to authorize the abatement of outstanding real estate taxes for FY 2021. And it says, "A Letter from the Select Board Directed to the Board of Assessors, Copying the Treasurer Collector's Office, Authorizing the Abatement of Remaining Real Estate Taxes Ode in FY 2021 As Relates to the Property Deeded and Recorded in Book 63557, Page 56 With the Worcester Registry of Deeds." And if there are any questions, let me know. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to approve those taxes.
Is there actually three addresses? Because the two areas reference six and eight, and the discussion references six, eight, and nine.
Yeah, this motion only addresses six and eight. So I believe nine was de minimis.
I move to approve a letter from the Select Board to the Board of Assessors requesting the abatement of remaining real estate taxes owed in FY 2021 as it relates to the property six and eight Trask Road. I'll add nine if needed, deeded and recorded in Book 63557, Page 56 with the Worcester Registry of Deeds.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I mean, do you want to summarize everything that I just heard? Is that land was gifted to the town, taxes were assessed, and the town owned it, so we're just cleaning up the books.
Correct. That's exactly correct. Right. Number seven, Consider Appointment of Amendment Police Officer. Chief Kersey, if you want to step up.
Good evening. So I have a motion before you to appoint a new police officer. This is Andrew Donahue. Comes to us from the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office, where he spent the past eight years. He's also served as a part-time police officer, and because of that, he was able to go to the Bridge Academy, which fully certified him to be a full-time police officer. This was one of our open positions that we interviewed over the past few months. It went through several candidates, he went through an extensive background, comes to us with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and new to the, not new to law enforcement in general, but new to being a police officer. So he'll start at the first step of rate and go through 12 weeks of field training, 12 to 16, and then he'll be on the road. So I ask you to appoint him. And again, everything's been done, physicals, psychologicals, background, and he's good to go. Just needs an appointment so he can leave his other job.
Are you ready to do? I'm sure at the Sheriff's Office, you were working at the Department of House of Corrections.
Yes, House of Corrections and Jail in Billerica.
In Billerica.
So dealing with the public sounds a little more dangerous than dealing with the inmates.
Yes. In my current position, I was able to take my deputy sheriff status there, which allowed me to go to the Bridge Academy. So we do do details within the community also.
Oh, great. Good. Excellent.
All right, so I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to appoint Andrew Donahue to the position of police officer, step one, paid rate of $1,092.30 per week.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Nick, get a quick picture.
Yeah, absolutely.
He loves to. You knew that was going to happen. Want to do it right up front?
Sure.
So you're going to bring everybody else up?
If you want without them, then they'll get up here. Thank you.
Wait, we got to get, Chief, you come on up, get the fire department up here, too. Everybody get up here.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Welcome. So number eight, Consider Signing the Annual Town Election Warrant.
I move to sign the May 16th, 2023 Annual Town Election Warrant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Make sure you don't go home without signing it. All right. And number nine is Vote to Authorize Police Chief to Assign Officers for the Elections.
I move to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one, at the polling location at every election there in for 2023 to preserve order and protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by Section 72 of Mass General Law, Chapter 54. Further move to designate the police chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. The town clerk will advise the police chief on the location and time the officer is needed.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 10, Discuss Police Chief, Fire Chief Process. Chief Kessler, if you want to come up with your deputy. Chief Kessler and I spoke on the phone this week, and he told me about the, I asked him to bring the deputy, the deputy to call firefighters with him, so he said, "I'll meet him."
So, yeah, Jason Bangma, sorry, Deputy Fire Chief. So I had sent out a letters to the board through the chair regarding retirement date in December. There was something else that came up within the last two weeks that I think may affect your decision on either a process or timing. Two weeks ago, I was given a diagnosis of a small cancer in me. I will be having surgery the end of July, and it'll be about a four to six-week recovery period. So I won't be around for some period of time between now and when I retire. That being said, that, you know, in the four years I've been here, I've really worked hard with the department, and the department has worked very well with me and the boards and the town administrator to build a cohesive department. When I started here, Deputy Bangma, who was not on the department at the time, but he is a resident of the town, approached me and said he'd like to help out here. We had previously worked together in Uxbridge. Actually, he was a high school intern when I was full-time in Mendon, I mean, in Uxbridge. And he is now a career person in Bellingham, has been for roughly 10 years, 11 years. So, and one of the things he also asked was, he told me he wanted to not only help out, but he wanted to be a chief at some point in time in his career, and he wanted to work with me, especially on the administrative side. On the training side, you know, I'm not sure that there's anybody better to train firefighters. He certainly excels over me in the training realm. Fireground operations, he's, you know, certainly on par with me and just about any other chief. And he's done a lot to build himself up. He's got a lot of certifications, including through Fire Officer III, and only have through Fire Officer II. He's been credentialed as a fire chief through the Mass Fire Service Commission since 2018, re-credentialed in 2021. He graduated from the Mass Fire Academy, Fire, Chief Fire Officer Program as well. So he's done a lot, and I could go on and on. The guys really respect him on the department. He is the one who's been backfilling my time when I've been down in Blackstone for the agreed-upon 12 hours a week. So I would just, I would ask the board to consider to facilitate a transition process of having the on-call deputy become a career deputy, filling that with Deputy Bangma, so that we can work together over the last few months of my, my career service time, and then put him into the role of Fire Chief in Mendon. Again, he is, he's a Mendon resident. A lot of towns have tried hiring fire chiefs. Blackstone tried, couldn't get anybody out of the assessment process. Grafton did. He was actually a finalist in Grafton for the Fire Chief. He made it through the assessment there. He was recently in the last three finalists for the Fire Chief position in Bellingham. They ended up hiring the Fire Chief from Hopkinton. But I just, honestly, I just think he'd be a great fit to replace me. And, and, you know, on the administrative side, he knows I'll pick up the phone anytime that he calls if he has a question. I don't anticipate that happening a whole lot, but, you know, I'd certainly be there anyways to support him. So that's my spiel. Be happy to answer any questions or...
My first question, Kim, when we went through the budget, what was the, what was the budget arrangements or what was built into the budget to pay for the career deputy chief or a full-time deputy chief? Was that built into the budget at some point in the next fiscal year?
Yes. We budgeted for the full-time deputy as of July 1.
Okay. So you're, you think because of your medical situation, I know you just talked about it, you think you'll be out for...
Yeah, so the appointment was just this afternoon in Boston. They explained the surgery, so it'll be a few days anyways, just recovering from that. But there's a lifting restriction of 10 pounds for four to six weeks. While I'd be available, certainly by phone, to be able to be in the office, I can't do firefighting for that four to six-week period. And so that'll run from the last week of July through Labor Day, first week of September, that I will not be able to fill, you know, Monday through Friday, eight to four shift.
So it's budgeted for July 1, so...
When's your surgery again?
What's that?
When's your surgery? Last week of July, July 25.
Oh, okay. So if we essentially made an appointment of the, from part-time to full-time deputy as of July 1, it's in the budget, so we can totally manage that?
Right.
And then the Fire Chief piece would be...
Well, as far as the, as far as the deputy chief, I would assume, is that a, is that a position within the, within the union or is it a, no, that would be...
No, so the deputy chief in Mendon is excluded from the union.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, a few years ago, they went through that. However, I think, and I don't want to speak for Jason, but he's got a career job in Bellingham now. If he was to come do a career deputy chief job here, he wouldn't want it for a short time period.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, sure. Like, July 1 would be reasonable.
No, I mean, I think to have him start career as, July 1 as a deputy chief, I think if I was in issues, I'd want the understanding that I was going to be made Fire Chief. So it would be whatever you guys decide your contract.
I understand.
With those two positions. I'll also note that, thank you to the State of Massachusetts and the Mass Fire Service, it is considered an injured-on-duty, so the town will receive, while I'm out, they'll receive the insurance money to backfill as well, so that assists with the payroll.
Oh, that's great.
I just, I just, Kim, could you give us your thoughts, please?
My thought is, that's terrible, Bill, and I'm so sorry.
Thank you. It's good, though. It's very small, caught very early.
I think this is the, the plan that Bill and I were talking about anyway, even the past couple of weeks, which was basically expediting, getting even the Fire Chief recruitment underway, possibly doing an assessment, getting a deputy in as soon as possible and moving in this direction. It's the best thing for succession for this place, and certainly we want to take Bill's recommendation since he is the subject matter expert in regards to fire.
But my understanding is, if we were to do this, it would be with the understanding you would, Jason, you would expect to be made chief.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to be my career job for a short period of time because I know that position is expected to go past the chief's retirement.
So the idea would be to forego any kind of a search and just jump to the step of appointing you as the deputy with the understanding that you would be the chief? That's what you're looking, that's what you're asking us to do?
Essentially, we'd have to make a motion.
Right.
If this is the way that we wanted to go, to appoint him as deputy chief until the chief is...
Retires.
...reaches his retirement date, and then he would become chief at that point, and then the contract would just have to read that.
Right, we'd have to do the contract. But, Kim, what are your thoughts on that?
My thought is, if he's willing to consider it, which is a big ask considering, there's big shoes to fill, and if he's willing to basically have a evaluation, quick evaluation done by a third party, which is probably MRI, and they sign off and they give him the thumbs up, I think you're good to go. It's the same exact process that we would do with promotions in the police department. I think it's in his best interest and everyone's best interest to basically have MRI just go through it, even just in an interview, just so you have an outside perspective and basically tell you the strengths and the weaknesses, and then you can know how to set him up for success. And, you know, take Bill's recommendation and, you know, he can grow into the chief he needs to be.
So the understanding, the idea is a motion to appoint him deputy chief with the understanding that he would be, be made chief upon Chief Kessler's retirement pending positive evaluation by MRI or an equivalent.
Right. And today is April 19th, and his appointment would be July 1st, right? He'll be acting in the absence of Bill, right? Potentially full-time now. I would suggest you get it done between now and July 1st.
Before I ask for motions, anybody have any other questions or discussion?
Just want to say that I have an enormous amount of respect for Bill and be really proud of the fire department that we have here, so. And moreover, I want to say that if, if there is internal talent, wherever it comes from, and it's really important to have upward mobility, so I think this is the best thing for the town.
I agree. The only reason I think we would go outside is if we didn't have an option like this.
Exactly.
And frankly, we haven't had that kind of option for a while, so.
Yeah, I just, no disrespect to anyone here. I just feel like this is really fast, and I prefer to cast a wider net to see if there are other applicants out there. That's just my nature. So, although I do agree that internal opportunity is obviously important, and I tend to go in that direction, but this feels just fast.
Well, let me, let me just say that there's no question, it's, you know, there's not a motion on here, and it's listed a different way, but what I would say is, I have been having conversations with the town administrator about this very issue with the Fire Department, and it's, it's something that dogs all the departments around. And this is, this is actually, this is what happens when you're finally prepared. And I would argue that the, that the chief has done an awful lot since he's been here to get us to this position. And I, I, I understand exactly what you're, and no disrespect to you, and I understand exactly how it may feel that way, and I have the, the benefit of having been around for a while, listening to the professionals do this. And I have to say very strongly that I think we should take the chief's recommendation, and I think we should make a motion. But again, as contingent on him, on the, on Jason Bangma passing whatever, whatever evaluation, although he's already done it once because he was a, he was a chief candidate already at least once. So I guess I'd be looking for, for a motion, if somebody would be willing to do that.
I move to appoint Jason Bangma to the position of Deputy Fire Chief, full-time Deputy Fire Chief to start July 1, 2023, upon the retirement of Chief Bill Kessler. He would be promoted to the position of chief, pending an evaluation from MRI and a successful contract negotiation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion will be made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I just want to weigh in that I think it's an opportunity to have continuity in the department, which I think is a real strength. So I, I hear, I hear thoughts about, you know, casting the wider net, but I, and I agree that it is best. But I also think that this is an opportunity that I think Mendon will benefit from by having this continuity in the department.
And I think Mike Goddard's point is well taken, and it's important. Now they're at this step, that we actually begin to replace the, right, the call deputy chief, so that we can have this kind of backup, so we don't have a crisis again. Because I, I can't stress enough that the situation was a real crisis before you stepped up and before Kim found you and did all this. So I just, I want to thank you for that, and we wish you, we wish you well, that this, that this is not a big deal, and it gets, you know, squared away so you can enjoy your retirement.
Thanks. I do want to say, if I could just real, there are a lot of great people on this department.
Oh, I know there is now, yeah, I know that.
The whole department has worked together, and, and there is, I know minor league just sounds so awful, but, I mean, there are people that are coming up that are developing themselves. So I think, you know, and I, and I know Jason believes very strongly, and that's why I think you'll see that continue.
And I just want to say that what my comments before was, had nothing to do with the, with the particular members of the department. It was just, you know, you're an exceptional leader, and that's what allowed this kind of development, this bench to get developed, so that you have this, and I know they are. And anybody's out there, if anybody else is looking to be a call firefighter, this would be a great place. We need them, right? I'm sorry, Mike, you had something on you.
Yeah, just two things. One, there was a comment made, I'm not sure who made it, previous week, talked about growing into the position of a full-time Fire Chief. And once again, this is not a reflection on the people. For me, it's more the process.
Yep.
But I think that, that gave me pause, to be honest, when I heard that statement made, and Cameron Crowe made that. I personally, as a, in my profession, help people grow and develop on the jobs. I have, I have no doubt this could work out. I just question if this is the best process right now, and is accelerating.
Yeah, I just, you know, since Chief Kessler's come on to the, to the, as Fire Chief for Mendon, which was, you know, a pretty big task in itself, you know, there was, you were, you were already settled in Uxbridge, and you took a chance on Mendon. Since that time, we have followed your direction and lead on anything to do with that Fire Department. And at this point, given, it is a hasty decision, I, no doubt, but I don't think any of us here would know better on who to put in this position rather than you. And I really think that that, you know, speaks volumes of what you've been able to do for this community. And, you know, I hate to see you even leave, but I get it. And if you've been mentoring Jason, I can only hope that you pay attention because huge shoes to fill, and if we can clone Chief Kessler, we're, we're way ahead of the game. So I, I have all the faith in you to, to, to take over that position, so. So I, I have all the faith in you to, to, to take over that position, so.
And I do approve of his hairstyle, too.
Yeah.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Don't picture?
Discuss formation of Lake Task Force.
Ha, yay. I will be brief.
All right.
The Lake, so there was a meeting between Board of Health, Conservation Members, Parks, Highway, I was there and members of the Lake Association and it was a very full room. There's a lot of people here. What had happened was, it just was, we figured we were going to start to have these meetings and then it just turned into this huge conversation that was, needed to be dwindled down. So we made a suggestion to start a formal Lake Task Force, if you will. Name doesn't really matter. We can call it whatever we want. That was what it kind of came up with that night. That would consist of a member of the Board of Health, a member of the Conservation Commission, Parks, Highway, Select Board and, you know, kind of a member, sorry, a member from the Lake Association. I think at the time we were like, is it going to be ad hoc? How's it going to be? Is it going to be a formal town committee? And I think that that's kind of what we're in here to do right now. What this committee will do is keep, take all of these members from each board and committee together for making sure the weeds are taken care of in the summertime. We, we have all these different, every board and committee was kind of doing a different thing. This will help bring everybody together, keep the communication rolling and, and help to not overlap items they can bring back to the committees and boards. The, what is happening there for testing, we, we put in the budget for the test kit, which will allow Dan to do multiple areas of testing around the lake so they can try to?
Pinpoint.
Pinpoint where we're having any issues with the E. coli. We still, at the beach, will still have to do the state certified testing. This will allow for more testing at the beach when needed. If we find an area around the lake that is a problem, then we can bring in the certified company to, to actually state certify that, that area. And we'll, hopefully we'll help to, again, pinpoint areas that are an issue maybe due to septic or something like that. Board of Health has been doing a ton with that and there was just all these meetings happening. Now everybody can meet with a, with a representative and that, that one meeting will now be able to filter back to the other groups.
Okay, so, so each, each of the, the boards or committees would choose their representative for this task force, including the Lake Association?
Correct.
And we don't need to officially appoint them or anything else? It's just they're going to be?
I think the only member that you would have to officially appoint is the Lake Association because it's not a town committee. And then they would get, you know, amend an email, if you will, or whatever, what have you. But everybody else is just a representative from the individual board that's already appointed and a member of the committee.
I think it's a great idea and the chair wants to go in the same direction.
Yeah, I think it's going to really streamline processes for them.
It's, what's already been done, it's just going to organize it.
Yeah.
Everybody's marching in the same direction at the same time, right?
Yeah.
All right.
I move to form the Lake Task Force consisting of members from the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Parks Department, Highway Department, Select Board and Lake Association to be appointed by the Select Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion?
Actually, could, could someone clarify for me with the, the Lake Association? Like, this is, it's a community group, so is the idea that there would be one or more members of that group officially appointed to this or?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, the Lake Association, for a long time, actually paid part of the cost of treating the lake for weeds. So, I mean, they've been financially responsible, too, but they're made up of people who live around the lake.
So the Lake Association, you actually join. You can, you can, they can pay membership fee and, and it's mainly people around the lake, but other peoples in the, other people in the community also join. So it would be a member selected by them to be appointed by the Select Board.
I see, I see.
As, but only one member.
Just one, okay.
We're trying to keep them, that way, again, they're just like any other board, except it's a private committee, if you will, that the town would still need to appoint a person.
And so will this be, the Lake Task Force be another committee, just another official Menden committee or board?
Correct.
And there's no, and I know the first time you talked about it, I wasn't here. I guess I would just, I just would want to talk to counsel and/or Kim to weigh in on this. And I think Caris North is on the, on the call, on the, on the meeting.
I am here.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for, thanks for coming. I don't know if you heard the conversation, but the, the, the motion is to create a task force made up of members of, of the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Parks Department, Highway Department, Select Board, and also a member from the Lake Association, which is a private organization that's, I guess it's a mutual benefit association for, for all the residents of Lake Nipmuck and any other interested parties. So my question is, you know, we're here making a motion, but, you know, do we, do we need to create, do we need to, to pass a bylaw or can we do it just with a motion? How do we do this legally? And do we need?
Yeah, it's a, you can create this, you know, ad hoc committee without a bylaw. You can create a committee. I think you need to specify the number of seats on the committee. So is it one person from Concom, one person from Board of Health? And are they going to choose their people or is the Select Board going to choose their people? Who's, you know, you need to specify the number of seats and who is going to fill them. And then it's the Select Board Committee, so it's a public body, will have to, you know, hold meetings in public, subject to the open meeting law.
Okay, that's great to know.
Okay, so let me, let me, um, let me adjust that motion, if you will. I move to form a Lake Task Force consisting of one member to be chosen by the individual board or committee from the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Parks Department, Highway Department, Select Board and the Lake Association. The Lake Association member to be appointed by the Select Board. I would also add that this is a public body and will need to adhere to open meeting.
Yeah, Menden's, Menden's bylaws and our open meeting bylaws about broadcasting and recording meetings. Right. All right. Motion been made and seconded. I think we discussed it enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Do we have any old business that we want to discuss now? All right, 13, consider meeting minutes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of 12:52 and 12:2122.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any other topics not raised by anticipated? Jack, would you like to, to weigh in? Do you have something that, that you want to bring up or?
You're muted.
Well, sorry, I just got on. I don't even know where you're at in the agenda, but I, I didn't know if anyone had any questions on one of the Warren articles regarding the mixed use development or I can give you an update or whatever you'd like.
I, it's, it's not on the agenda, but I, I know you and I had a conversation about it this week. Now, there's a hearing on Monday?
Monday at 6:00 PM, the Planning Board will have their obligation to have a public hearing. There's very little on the agenda, so I think it'll start probably about 6:15, yes.
So, so? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, I've gotten a lot of good, positive comments from a lot of residents and board members, including your own board and other boards. And I think the document's just getting stronger and better every day and I'm, I'm, I'm pretty excited about it, to be honest with you. I've been working on a PowerPoint to try to encapsulate what I'm trying to do or we're trying to do. And I'm getting a lot of support on that, too. The one question I'd like you to think about, it's probably at this point, the Planning Board's decision until it, until town meeting, is we're, we're proposing four parcels. And the whole idea was to, and that's whittled down from probably 50 parcels, 40 parcels, I don't remember how many. And I'm struggling whether we should have it à la carte for town meeting to pick how many they'd like between one and four? Or do we just kind of without mincing words, cut to the chase and, and leave it at the Hastings Street parcel to see if, hopefully it gets approved, see if it works? And then if it works, which I hope it does, then explore some other parcels. And I'm struggling with that. I haven't talked to the board about it. We haven't met in a while, but.
So, so just to summarize, this is, this is under old business, one of the Warren Articles that is on for the annual town meeting on May 5th. And this is, this is the Warren Article that specifically addresses an overlay district that the Planning Board is proposing for the Hastings Street property, which used to be or is currently the driving range. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes, go ahead, counsel.
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I think this is a question that is appropriate for the Planning Board hearing next week.
I agree.
And so perhaps folks would be, you know, would want to discuss it then.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say, is just that, just so I could identify, just so everybody's wondering, that's what we're discussing. And, and, you know, our, our planner wanted to bring it up. And I think this has been a great way to promote the hearing on Monday, so people can tune in on Monday if they like or come to the public hearing, which will be in this same room at 6 o'clock on Monday and it can be discussed further. But I, it's, again, I know it's old business under the agenda, but I, I think we should leave it there. Okay?
Yeah, I just, I wanted you guys to know and to think about what I'm asking and if you can come to the hearing, that's great, either virtually or live, and we'll have that discussion, amongst others, I imagine.
Thanks, Jack. Thanks, Jack.
You got it.
All right, at this point, I'm going to move to go into executive session. I move to enter into executive session under purpose to pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct, to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, union, town administrator, and we're only going to return to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Roll call vote, Morali, aye?
Tineo, aye.
Chanel, aye.
Goddard, aye.
Rugo's, aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. Good night.